We can call the board.
President, I have Dr. Punch. Dr. Punch is being reported to the board. Her phone was out at the end of February because of the little mistake in that motion and vote. She was technically not a member of the board today. I've advised her, suggested to her she be here anticipating the discussions, but I suggested that she not vote on matters that I presented to the board at this meeting. I made them aware of it and they're taking steps to get it through here.
Just let the minutes reflect that, we keep.
All right. Roll call.
Dr. Robinson, here with the West.
Here.
Dr. Punch, here with the Blair.
Here with the Jane.
Here, your matter's trimmed. Okay, any changes need to be made on the agenda at this time?
I think it's number like number eight point three to the new course of table two.
Eight point twelve. Two, eight point seven. And eight point six. And eight point seven.
What about eight point five?
We can discuss and update groups if I'm up there. Okay, if you want to pull that, that's fine.
Yeah, because what it actually says approve.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a pro?
I'd like to offer motion that we approve the agenda with the changes to eight point five, eight point six, eight point seven, and eight point twelve.
Eight point eleven.
Eleven.
And eight point eleven, I'm sorry.
Second.
And eight point twelve.
It's been moving seven all in favor. Okay. Public comment. No. All right. Item number five, recognition and presentation. Five point one.
Mr. James, members of the board, we have some recognitions from the PREPS program at William Care. PREPS is a program of research and evaluation for public schools. They say we're excited to share with you the schools in your district that have been awarded a PREPS achievement and/or growth award for 2023. Enclosed with this letter are the certificates for your winning schools. Please note the formulas below that we use for this year's award. As you know, PREPS has a tradition of annually recognizing individual schools that have outstanding performances on the statewide assessment. Our goal is to use common sense ways to recognize outstanding performances and to use formulas that are easy to explain. I hope that you find that we will meet these goals with the creation of the PREPS Achievement Awards and the PREPS Growth Awards for 2023. It is our wish that these recognitions play a small role in celebrating the hard work that you and your team have done to help students reach their fullest potential. We have those awards right here. It's better than Oscars. The Program of Research and Evaluations for Public Schools presents the third grade ELA Achievement Award. Two, McLauren Elementary School, Natchez Adams School District. So an ELA achievement, or a, and the liquid Drake. Representatives from McLauren Elementary School. Assume the position.
We always encourage the executive lives by organizations outside of our district for achievement. And so this is an honor indeed. We know that as a district, we've had to work very diligently to get across that line, that bar. And so we are proud of McLauren and your staff. We know that Ms. Q O'Neil is still a staff member. Ms. Drake went on to, I won't say green pastures, but other pastures. So we thank you all, we applaud you all for your work.
Third grade math achievement award to McLauren Elementary School. Champ Woods and Terry Duque. Mr. Duque is here.
Police.
All right. Do the noting.
Thank you so much for your dedication to our students. We'll make sure that she gets her personal one.
Oh, she will get her personal.
No, we'll get a personal one.
Fifth grade ELA achievement award to Suzeby West Elementary School. Sandra Ellis.
So we'll make sure, well, Mrs. Smith will come in as a family representative. Mrs. Ellis is Mr. Smith's sister.
Fifth grade ELA achievement award to T. C. Wyatt, McLauren Elementary School, future.
So we're going to put this, this package come forward. We'll make sure that you get yours, I think we're in the process of working. Because this is a joint effort, so read off.
And also fifth grade ELA achievement award, class of nineteen ninety-four, Natchez High School. For some reason, I went to lunch way before she did, I don't know why. Shawala Hawkins.
Thank you so much for doing all the reading where I didn't get to.
I got you, hey man. I copied off your paper.
I'm short.
Yeah, Lord, why do you just do?
One, two, pull it down some. One, two, three.
I have a minute.
See it all.
Thank you all.
Okay. Five point three.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. This is Natchez High Monthly School Board Update. And we have a topic. Okay, the comprehensive assessment data piece has not changed since the last report. We have taken our third annual assessment high, but we have not received the data back. So we will report that on the next month's meeting. But we do have the demographic piece as far as our ADA and absence of attendance rate. So for the month of February, we had a total enrollment of six hundred and thirty-one students. Our student ADA for the month of February was ninety point twenty percent. Percent of students with two or more absences for the month is forty-five percent. Teacher attendance rate, forty-eight percent. And the number of missed room referrals, one sixty-seven. For our allocation of resources, we have received our projected allocation that we will use for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's projected to be fifty-three thousand dollars. So we will utilize that to address the deficit with our special population for the math portion. And we will begin that in twenty-four, twenty-five school years. We just got this information a few weeks ago of what we would get. Okay, that is, that's it. Any questions?
Drink that bowl, thank you.
All right, item number six, approve a minute. Approve a February twenty, twenty, twenty-four regular meeting minute. Approve a March bill, twenty, twenty-four special meeting minute. Can we get them moved?
Move that we approve six point one and six point two.
We move them seven all in favor. Okay, number seven, approve or consent hour. Anything consent hour, anything need to be moved. And I give approve or consent hour.
Some will go approve of seven point one, seven point two.
Been moving seven all in favor. Four zero, okay, item number eight, eight point one.
Mr. James, members of the board, item eight point one and eight point one A for approval of personnel recommendations and vacillations. So if you have those documents before you, it is a recommendation that the board approves those changes as submitted.
Move seven all in favor. Passes four zero, eight point two.
I'm going to approve of claim, Dr.
Second.
It's been moving, uh, the seven all in favor. Passes four zero, eight point three.
Eight point three is approval of student travel. There is requests for out-of-state travel for Natchez Middle Schools as a student incentive, growth incentive as we progress through this school year. There's an overnight travel request for the Natchez High School tennis teams of Oxford, Mississippi. And there is also a request to approve out-of-state travel for Natchez High School seniors. Also an incentive. So it's a recommendation that the board moves those requests.
Some move. Second.
We move seven all in favor. I have passes four zero, eight point, eight point four.
Eight point four is a request by Mr. Johnny Butler, who's an owner-operator to lease the parking lot of the Washington property for the period of one year. I'm sorry, for the period of two years. And let me ask if the board take those requests so that I can get what we're going to get that freedom draft out.
It's been moving seven all in favor. It passes four zero. So we got eight point eight.
Mr. James, members of the board, bring to you for approval the twenty-four, twenty-five academic calendar. Not bringing you anything controversial about the calendar for next year. But we will briefly just go through it because there are a couple of changes. New teachers will come back on July the twenty-second. All staff will come back on the twenty-fourth. And students will start on July the twenty-ninth. No breaks in August, but I will come back to that in September. Of course, we'll have Labor Day. And fall intercession will start on September thirtieth and end on October fourth. There'll be a fall break, the eleventh and fourteenth of October. But the fourteenth of October will be Parent-Teacher Conference Day. So teachers will be at work that day for parent-teacher conference. In November, of course, we have the brief for Thanksgiving. In December, we'll have our normal Christmas break. And when we come back in January, the staff will come back on January the sixth. January the seventh will be another parent-teacher conference day. The students will come back on January the eighth. Of course, Martin Luther King Day on the twentieth. So in February, we'll have Presidents' Day. March, we are going to omit the spring intercession for next year. For this year, you know, we found that over the last couple of years that in March, well, if we talk about this year, we're only going to have about ten days of instruction for March. And we just can't, can't do that. So next year, we're going to correct that and just not have the intercession and have more instructional days.
And also, we have a bunch of our students, students who are registered for the spring intercession. But over the last couple of sessions, we noticed that they just not attended. And so then we are budgeting for a good amount of students to show up, but they are not showing up.
We'll have spring break the tenth through the fourteenth. And March twenty-eighth will be a parent-teacher conference day. So at the end of each nine weeks, there's built into the calendar a parent-teacher conference day. April will have Good Friday and the Monday after Easter out. And getting some dividends from starting just a little earlier. In May, we'll have graduation on Memorial Day weekends. On May the twenty-third, that Friday will be graduation. And staff and students, teachers and students, that'll be their last day. And so we've had different meetings and done surveys and met with teachers and parents and other staff, staff members. And what the teachers talked about was they just needed time. We presented several scenarios to give them time. And they just said, you know, one, protect the planning time that we have during the day. And also whatever else you can give to show us that, you know, you're listening. And we're not just putting out surveys and stuff, just be putting them out so we're listening. So we've built in some early release days for professional development. And you'll see those in orange, those are on the second and fourth Wednesdays in August, September, and February. And so when students are released, the remainder of the time will be for teachers to do what they need to do. So that's less that they have to take on. So it is the recommendation of the superintendent that you approve the proposed twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five academic calendar.
Some move.
Thank you.
Okay. Eight point ten.
Eight point ten, Mr. James, members of the board. Eight point ten is a request for the prospective superintendent leadership academy. The Mississippi School Board Association offers this academy for educators who are interested in the superintendent role or who are working in that central office capacity. We have, the board has approved other employees. I also went through the superintendent's academy. Very great information to get to connect with other prospective superintendents that bring in current superintendents and former superintendents. We provide you guidance on budgeting, visioning, working with stakeholders, and so forth. And so this is a request for Mr. Fields to participate in that prospective superintendent leadership academy. So it is approval, the recommendation, it is my recommendation that the board approves his participation in that academy.
Let me ask a question. Has anybody else made a request other than Mr. Fields?
Not this year, no.
In the district?
In our district?
Yes.
We've sent other people, but this year?
I know, but this year.
No, sorry, I've not received any others.
Well, if you look at the need for superintendents that crosses my desk or email on a constant basis, I don't know what we're doing in Mississippi to superintendents.
It's nationwide. I subscribe to a nationwide publication. And there is a huge turnover in superintendencies across our nation. I would, I would, I would attribute that to high stakes assessment, politics, finances. All of those would play a part.
Will that move if you send Tony on?
I mean, move firm to. I mean, I said.
Okay, been moved and seven all in favor. All right. Yeah, ministry nine point one, Mr. Fields.
Did you have in your packets of policies to review for the next thirty days?
Okay. Nine point two.
Good afternoon, Mr. James, members of the board. Superintendent McDonald, Brine, and other central office women's children. For your review is the federal program ESSER, ARP, or ESSER III overview. As always, it states at the top that this particular grant is September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, at which time all funds must be obligated. And December thirtieth of twenty-twenty-four, all funds must be liquidated. It also reflects in the column entitled allocation what the initial allocation was. And it also shows you as of February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four, the total amount allocated, the year-to-date expenses for those amounts that have been expended and our balance. However, please be cognizant that even though it shows that balance, all invoices have not been paid at this point. That ends the ESSER ARP overview. Any questions?
No. That's it?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Nine point three, board calendar. Anything board see need to be added, taken away. Give it this days. Should take care of nine point four.
Nine point four, superintendent's update. I believe that you all received update this past week. Or the week before. The week before, updates, those days are moving. Just current updates, the building, the renovations at Mortontown and McLauren have begun on the HVAC and restrooms. So they started on last week, so we'll continue that process. We'll start meeting, our weekly meetings, update meetings on this week. Mr. Ford, Mr. Fields, and myself have been working with that team to make certain that we are progressing well. Discovered a minor issue last week. We thought that we could cut water off in sections to the buildings. But at McLauren, once you cut the water, it's the main system, so it's for the entire. So we're going to have to re, look at that phase in project process again because we know once the students return next week, then some of that work will have to be either adjusted or we're going to have to adjust that timeline on when they will be in that particular building. But they have started that process. We have, we met last month. We had two forums, actually three. And I think we've already updated the board on my voice, my NASD, the parent meeting. At the end of February, we met with teachers. Again, as Mr. Fields has stated, we want our employees to know that the board and the district leadership is going, are going to be responsive to their concerns, their issues, and their suggestions. So we don't want to put out surveys and we're not responding to what they're saying. So this, this particular forum was for employees to provide their input and how we can maximize time for teachers. As you all are aware, teachers are tasked and can become challenged and overwhelmed by the number of responsibilities that they have. We can increase our name, so we have to be creative with the time that we have allocated. So we brought teachers in. We had approximately sixty-five participants over the two days, which was a great turnout. It was really great conversations. We received a lot of positive feedback from teachers about being allowed this opportunity in order to express their concern as well as listen to their suggestions. So there were a number of things that they highlighted as time killers. We focused on two areas. What are your time killers? What is eating away at your time? And then what are their suggestions of how we can decrease those time killers? And so they provided a lot of good information. That's why you have a calendar that has those built-in early release days. That's why we have a calendar with those parent conference days. And that all came out of those particular forums, those meetings. They also talked about some paperwork, MTSS being one of them. That is the intervention process for students who are not making progress as quickly academic progress or behavioral progress as they should. One of their concerns was the amount of paperwork that is associated with that process. And so I know that in the past, as a district, we've worked to try to decrease what teachers have to do in terms of that paperwork. But that's something that we have to look at again to see if there's any way that we can shift responsibilities to take some of that responsibility from them. Again, there were a number of other areas that they highlighted that we are definitely going to address. Some of them are expectations now, but it's obvious that expectations are not being met as we have hoped they would be. So we have to go back to the table to make certain that the things that we've set in place, five days, we should not have five days of meetings during planning time. There is only one mandated district meeting, and that's a PLC. And so we need to take a look at the scheduling that is occurring at the building level to make certain that we can protect some planning time because teachers have to grade papers. They have to integrate. They need to be able to collaborate with their colleagues without administrators. You know, that is just a professional process that teachers go through. They need to be able to look at lesson plans and determine resources and so forth. So we're going to go to, go to the drawing board. We're going to work, and we told, this is not a district down. This is not a top-down. This is going to be a collaborative effort. So this will not be a one-time shot. There are other forums that we have scheduled at the end of this month, started at the end of the month with other stakeholders so that we can talk about some of the challenges of the district, but also ways that we're going to turn those challenges into opportunities. One other announcement that I have that I would like to make. A couple of weeks ago, I went to the high school to meet with Mrs. Reynolds and one of her teachers. And I started off the conversation by telling them that during this time of the year, there are often some conversations that are not the most pleasant conversations. They are difficult conversations to have. Not always the most comfortable, but they are necessary. But I had to turn that conversation around to let them know that my, my peers at the high school on that, they had nothing to do with those difficult conversations. It was actually a wonderful conversation. So we are pleased to announce. that Ms. Tammy Hughes, who is the Natchez Adams School District Teacher of the Year, is now a finalist for the State Teacher of the Year representing a better community. As far as I am aware, now there may be somebody who's aware, but as far as I am aware, we have never had a Teacher of the Year from Natchez Adams School District to pro- progress to that next level. So we are extremely proud of Ms. Hughes and we, I think she interviewed, she interviews this week.
On the twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth, she will interview M. Jackson at M D E on the twenty-sixth along with the other, uh, finalists. And we pray that Mrs. Hughes is selected as the State Teacher of the Year. Uh, two and three, and that's the high school.
Right.
Yeah, she's also the president of the local chapter of M A E. Very, very active parent and stakeholder. Yeah, so we are very excited for Mrs. Hughes and this opportunity. And that is all of my updates.
You must be charging your battery real hard. You were ready. I yield my time. Doctor Robertson.
As usual, everybody, please stay safe.
No, sir, thank you.
I, I just want to congratulate Xandra and the, all of you all, administration and Braden, for working with the teachers one-on-one in a much more transparent way so that teachers and our stakeholders get more of a voice. I can't stress that enough. That's a very positive direction that I want to see us continue in the district. So, thank you all for doing that.
I still want to say, Ms. Reynolds is my administrator of the year.
All right, I don't have anything that he needs to say.
Did I miss, um, eight point two, did I get moved?
What?
I didn't want to make sure I did my part.
No, 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 Doc, you had already helped us earlier.
So that was, that was, okay.
Did you have anything to add, like?
Yes, sir, um, Mr. Ford asked me to come talk to y'all. I guess he forgot to mention that. Uh, my name is Charles O'Neal. I'm the, uh, Assistant Regional Forester for our region. Right now, we don't have an area forester in this area, so I'm taking over operations. And me and Mr. Ford had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, um, just kind of about what was going on with the sixteenth section land and timber sales and, and so forth. So I didn't know, um, who to send this to, so, um, I just printed out some copies. But it's just kind of what's going on this year with, oh, I'm sorry. That, that we had going on this year and with, he said that with the absence of our, our forester, we kind of missed out. So I wanted to come give y'all a quick update and, and let y'all know kind of what's going on. Um, for the most part, and he, he had asked, and I, and I'll make a, a point to go visit him a, another day and go through this with him as well. But his biggest concern was we haven't been cutting much timber on the sixteenth section lands. Um, so that's what's at the bottom here. We go through every section that, that y'all have. And it tells the few stands that we have some thinning operations in in the next few years. Uh, but if you'll look in that condition spot where a lot of them say inoperable, it's not that we, we can't cut timber there because there is timber there to cut. But at this time in the timber industry, the only way that we can cut timber is with machinery. The, the time of the chainsaw passed many years ago. And due to either elevation restrictions with equipment or due to loess saw where they can't stand up, there's a lot of the sections that we can't put equipment on. So there's standing timber there that could be harvested. But due to the fact that no longer there is a chainsaw in any logger's belt because of insurance reasons, insurance kind of threw the, the small logger with the chainsaw just out of the way. So we have, I don't know what, what y'all, um, would like to do, um. You know, like I said, I, there's, there's many things, I know y'all probably have hunting leases on these sections and different things. And, and by no means I don't, you know, know what y'all make on that or i- if, if that's the case that, um, the school might want to look at swapping some land. If y'all make enough off the hunting leases, y'all might want to keep it because the hunting leases produce enough income for y'all. Like I said, that, that would be something that y'all as a board, you know, would, would need to decide on. But there's many sections here that we just literally can't do anything with other than manage it for hunting. Um, so, I mean, if y'all, you know, decide what y'all would like to do, obviously, we would do everything in our power to make that happen. But, um, there, like I said, there's one sale that can be done this year. It was actually put forth last year and it did not sell. So, um, I was gonna ask tonight if y'all wanted me to re-up that sale for this year. It's a thinning on, um, section sixteen-five north one west. And they, we tried to sell it last year, we got no bids. Um, I'm not going to lie to you, the timber industry on, on the pupwood side is still, you know, down on price. We're only looking at getting two, maybe three dollars a ton if we're lucky for pupwood, and that's what this is going to be. But also, the health of the stand needs it to be thin due to all the insect problems that we have been dealing with. So, um, that was one main thing I was coming tonight to, to ask permission for is to, you know, advertise that to see if we could get a bid on it for thinning. And, um, the top portion just kind of shows some of the estimated cost and revenue. Um, the first one is that, that thinning that I'm asking y'all to approve for me to do. Um, we have two management plans set to write this year that do the four hundred and eighty-two acres and then, um, three sections that need boundary line paint. Now, the road maintenance and the technical assist, I wrote to the side in notes only if needed because some years we have to, some years we don't. So we just always put that in there as a, it might happen kind of thing. And if y'all have any questions, you know, I'll try my best to answer you.
So I ask the board to allow me the opportunity to speak with Mr. O, uh, Mr. O'Neal along with Mr. Ford, uh, so that we can get, uh, more information about this particular, uh, section of land. And then we will return to the board with a recommendation of how to proceed.
Okay.
You from Mississippi?
Yes, sir, I'm from Green County. Uh, over on Alabama line, almost.
Hey, you sound like my boy.
But, oh, I've got a thick craw, yes, sir. But thank y'all for letting me come and meet y'all, um, and we'll be glad, like I said, to do whatever y'all decide in the future. But it, you know, it's, it's whatever y'all look forward to in the future that we need to do to, to produce y'all money.
Okay.
All right, thank y'all.
Yes, sir.